Pretty high too. Unless you get a bad flooding during the rain. You're gonna have more trouble looking after my house than you're gonna have looking after the place else.
And then the gills again.
Now, you don't have to station an officer out in front of the house the whole time. Just like on a show day.
What's that?
I don't have any of the punch, sorry.
No, there's not any.
I can get your formal service.
No, that's okay.
Actually, there's two in there. I just want to get one. I saw something while we were about.
I can't read my own card.
I just came here for the abuse from the law.
That was a tendance of the thing. I missed that.
That was one of the jobs. I'm good, thank you. I'll have enough water over the next three days. Yeah, the hell of a.
My tide was already pushed up in Port Richi, they were cleaning it out. Southside were already.
I told my neighbor, he, cause he just, he's like, what does five D K look like? I'm like, alright. It's got some, I waited until high tide, I said, look out at the canal, plus eight feet.
Well, the problem is, there's not much water now.
I said, that's what it looks like.
And if all those houses are gonna ask for it.
Where you been? I'm waiting for your call.
I'm others. I'm shipping all, I'm shipping the boats.
I will keep my driveway, but I'll be loading full, so with this place, we could, about fourteen, fifteen inches of warp, so it's gonna help you out.
Yours is, your neighbor is kinda crazy, because if the water go deep in the street, the houses are very wet.
Yeah, well, houses are so high.
A couple of years ago, I had, once before, we had a really bad rain. I was, I was, I had fourteen inches of water, standing water, and I ended my driveway, and the street was dry, and laying at the end of the old section, twenty-two inches standing, but our houses were all fine.
Alright, let's call the water. This is gonna be City of Port Ritchie Emergency City Council Meeting for Monday, September twenty-sixth. At this time, I'd like to stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and her justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes, this is Operations Manager Sal Carey filling in for City Clerk Ashley McDonald, doing the roll call. Mayor Scott Tremblay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tom Consalva.
Here.
Councilman Tom McClary.
Here.
Councilwoman Linda Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilman Bill Colombo.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager John Duke.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I wanted to open up with some comments. This is a meeting that I asked for this morning, under the emergency hours, there's different ways that a meeting could be scheduled. One is by charter, requested the mayor, so I requested this morning that this be set. The purpose of setting this was twofold, really threefold. One was I wanted to vote to ratify the state of emergency, which I felt needed to happen earlier today. One was to vote to whether or not we wanted to cancel the council meeting, which was already done, but I wanted to vote to ratify that as well. And then to get some updated information from city management. That having been said, I wanted to know if I could have a motion to amend council business to include ratifying Resolution twenty-two, which was declaring an emergency pursuant to city code twelve forty-eight. I was looking for a motion to ratify that and put it on the emergency motion.
Motion.
On the paper. And then the second item I wanted.
Just for the record, no number on the motion yet, so he has authority to put a number on it.
Yeah, we have not yet a number on it.
Okay, alright, I said, cut this one. And then, the other thing I wanted to add to the council business was a vote to ratify canceling our regularly scheduled meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow evening, and I felt that that should be rescheduled as well, were canceled and then rescheduled later. So to do that, I wanted a motion to modify the, or add an addendum to the council business.
Motion to cancel tomorrow's meeting and reschedule in the future.
Well, I'm just looking for a motion, just to add it so we can discuss it and vote on it.
Okay, whatever you said.
Okay.
Yeah, motion to canceling the city council meeting.
Oh, okay.
Alright, on the paper.
Alright.
Alright, this time, I'm gonna open up to any commentary from city management.
Well, three pages of comments, Mr. Mayor. I'm just bringing you up to date on what we've been doing and when. First of all, I've met with department heads this morning at eight-thirty, got a brief of what had been taking place late last week and over the weekend, and then an update on what we'd be working on through the day. So, public works has topped off, all of the diesel tanks, they've checked the generators, they spent the morning inspecting and clearing stormwater infrastructure, they looked at all the grates, all the inlets, conducted brush pickup to reduce flying debris hazards, they've made contact with their contractors and vendors for recovery service, and secured the pump, and began pumping the waterway over the Sun Coast, Sun Coast Trailer Park. PD's been making schedule changes to ensure adequate staffing, going to or have moved the boat to City Hall. Done, thank you, chief. City parks will stay closed through the storm peak, I won't say season, let's call it a day or so, but we're gonna keep the city parks closed. Chief's got all the vehicles topped off with fuel, and when we last met, was working on the NICSOL evacuation message in the event that the county did issue evacuation orders, county has done that, so that NICSOL message, if it hasn't, will be going out soon. The fire department has reviewed their plan to stage fire equipment at City Hall, if and when the station is threatened by high water. We will have emergency recall personnel here at City Hall, we don't have enough bunks and space for them at the fire station, so they're gonna be bunking here. The counties also asked for, in the event that one of their stations is threatened or inundated, if they could have some of their personnel here. So, as soon as we're done here this evening, we're gonna clear out the chairs and turn this into a bunker for emergency responders. FD is gonna be staging our boats at the county government building, the county's given us permission to store our boats over there undercover. We, Chief Public Castries is gonna be making contact with dry storage facilities to secure additional covered storage space. Chief and I both participated in EOC activities over the weekend. Over the weekend, EOC was at level two, I'm sorry, level three, which was basically every twelve hours, they'd put out a statement, forwarded those to you. This morning, they changed to level two, and that mandates that we have a liaison there, and Fire Chief and his personnel are providing that liaison activity. And as you've seen, EOC is meeting every couple of hours and putting out updates. It looks to me like they're trying to have their meetings right after the National Hurricane Center has updated the MAC, so they have some idea of what has changed. Finance has moved all of the cash from City Hall to the banks, so we have no cash in the building, so it won't blow away or float away. Rachel has started the FEMA storm tracking processes, there's a form called Form two fourteen, it's basically a log, and all personnel will be, have received that, and will be utilizing that to track their activities, so that we have hopefully as clean record as possible to apply for FEMA reimbursement if and when that becomes a factor. This morning, the building official went out, drove every street in Port Ritchie, stopped at locations where it looked like there could be either wind-borne hazards or waterborne hazards, basically stuff in the yard. And Mike made contact with property owners, asking them to secure things that were in their yards, really focused on the west side of the city, that's where we anticipate the bulk of the water. Mike's also made contact with all of the holders of open building permits, to ask them to secure whatever building material they may have. And we will, as soon as the storm passes, we've already made arrangements for Mike's hours to be expanded, probably gonna have a lot of building official business as people start to clean up, want to repair and put things back together, so we'll have more of Mike's time to do that function. IT, our internet and phone systems are functioning, and according to George, they, they're stable, they're solid, as long as the infrastructure that supports them is intact, so the poles, the wires, which is all outside of our domain, but our vendors will be responsible for that. But right now, all of our systems are functioning. He did make contact with Big Sur and reviewed our backup processes, everything, our data has been backed up, it is stored by Big Sur in multiple locations, so if their Tampa site were to suffer a loss of some sort, they've got data stored in another location. But again, our access to that data is infrastructure dependent, so if we have a failure of internet for that period of time, we won't have access to our data that's stored with Big Sur. Some of us have, some of our data on local hard drives, those are working copies, anything permanent goes up to the cloud and Big Sur. And my office declared, as you know, declared a local state of emergency consistent with the governor's declaration, did call for an emergency city council meeting this evening after consultation with the mayor, and got a resolution to confirm that in front of you. Over the weekend, I was in contact with department heads by phone, but we've started meeting every four hours during business hours, met first thing this morning, again at noon, and then at three-thirty this afternoon. As we get a little closer to the event, we may push that out into the evenings and have additional department head meetings, either by phone or in person. I was able to join the county EOC Board of County Commissioners briefing this morning, that was very informational. The short version of that is, EOC is taking this very seriously, and in their words, this is the event that they trained for, this is the worst-case scenario, and so they're pretty, that this is not gonna be, oh, it just blew by. Maybe we'll get lucky, but they're assuming the worst here. Had an opportunity to visit with the mayor this morning and make sure he and I are on the same page, maybe media requests, and there's things that he will be dealing with. I'm gonna hold an all-staff meeting tomorrow morning, kinda lay out the plan for both essential and non-essential staff. For non-essential staff, I'm gonna send them home at noon tomorrow, and give them an opportunity to take care of family and do what they need to do. Essential staff, in the absence of a governor's mandatory evacuation, in that case, we all leave. But in the absence of that, we'll use the strength of the storm as our guideline. When winds get to or above sustained forty mile an hour, essential staff are going home, basically shutting down city operations, it's not safe to be out. And then when the winds, sustained winds come back down below forty, we'll recall all the essential staff. Obviously, we don't have the idea of when we could call non-essential staff back, hopefully it's Friday, maybe it's Monday, we'll kinda play that one by ear. Just an update on a couple of infrastructure things, City Hall has generated capacity, and by that I mean diesel fuel, if we turn it on right now, it'll run for about two weeks, and so we'll have about two weeks of electricity if needed. The water plant, that generator and fuel tank has capacity to run about one week, and so if we lost power, if we could not get a resupply of diesel after one week, the water plant would go down. But right now, we have one week of continuous operation capacity there. The fire department's gonna be moving their bottled water supply into City Hall, that will support both their personnel and what few essential staff will be left here. This afternoon, we got updates from the National Hurricane Center, basically every forecast is worse than the one before, and so as the storm gets closer, it looks more serious than it did the last update. Like I already mentioned, we received approval from the county to store city equipment at covered facilities, trying to get the boats and the ATVs undercover. The, and I think I already also mentioned, Pasco County's requested use of our city facilities, so we're gonna accommodate them. The Fire Chief, pardon me, Fire Chief has put out a memo to his personnel for emergency callback, which means all personnel will be responding back to, initially to the station, pick up gear, pick up supplies that they need, and then when necessary, about the time they're gonna need to sleep, they'll move up here to City Hall, he'll have all personnel on duty. Again, we're gonna play that by ear, but as early as tomorrow night, as late as Wednesday night, kinda depending on the demands of the storm. He told his personnel to be prepared to stay through Saturday morning, again, that's a play it by ear and see what's needed, if we can send them home sooner than that, we will. Finance did go through, briefed all the department heads on the documentation requirements and has provided support for that. Out of my office, we completed the online application for FEMA reimbursement, so that at the appropriate time, we're already in the system, we can start uploading our documents, and we did get a receipt of acknowledgement back from FEMA that that's been accepted. We're in the process of rehearing and developing an inter-local agreement with the county to help us process debris cleanup. FEMA does not reimburse for non-critical, shall we say, debris cleanup. If we have to clean or cut or make way for emergency purposes, that's reimbursable, but picking up all of the debris after the flood is not a FEMA reimbursable to the city, so we're working on the inter-local agreement for that. I'll have an all-staff meeting tomorrow at eight, or release non-essential personnel at noon, and then have criteria for essential personnel to be released. City Hall is not a shelter location. When I first typed that, I did not have anything from the county on what their shelter locations were going to be, and as soon as I sent that, the county put out their list of shelter locations, so those have been distributed, they've been posted, and the county does have shelters that are going to be made available. County EOC provided me and department heads with their entire list of contact numbers, so we've got that from, got that. Right before we came into the meeting, that's what I was talking about, the county has, county commission has issued a mandatory evacuation for Zone Eight, and strongly recommended evacuation for Zone B and C, so we've posted that to Facebook and to the website. That's all we have at the moment, Mr. Mayor, obviously standing for your questions and concerns.
The, one of the questions I wanted to ask you, what you touched on has to do with the city website, and what information that we've posted, and what you anticipate posting as this progresses.
Well, we, as things have come from the county, we've been putting, we've been putting those up, it's always a balancing act, is, you know, do I, do I, do we repeat everything the county says, and post stuff that people are getting from other sources, so we've tried to be diligent in getting information that is relevant and immediate, we'll continue to do that. But obviously, if there's additional information that you're looking forward to be there, let me do that.
This is just the commentary, or comments from the city manager, but we have commentary as well, I'm gonna start with my left to Linda Rodriguez, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Who do we call if, I don't, we should not call the police, like, trees down, for instance, my neighborhood, yeah, we have a lot of the huge old oak, and I don't really wanna burden nine-one-one, so can we get out to, since we, appears it might be really bad with the trees, who would we contact? I know probably there'll be a lot of people, chances are, out there doing it themselves, but some of us don't have that, so.
Yeah, but I'd ask you to call City Hall, and we'll get, either call City Hall, or actually put in a request through email, we can get that to Sal and Richie, and Richie's guys, cause they're gonna be busy. Anything to add there, Sal?
Well, are you talking about if a tree lands in the street, or if?
Yeah, and if the road is impassable.
Yeah, well, like I said, we can, we'll go ahead and post a non-emergency number for police harmony, and of course, a direct contact for myself and Richie, but we can't assist any type of, if unfortunately, a tree lands on the home, that becomes an insurance claim, and stuff like that, we can't go ahead and.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was specific, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear, I, yeah, the roads, if the roads are impassable. Okay, thank you. That was all I had, thank you.
Councilman Colombo.
I just wanted to, thanks to city manager for his update, both here and now, and what we've been getting all day long, as well as what you've been putting out on the city website and the social media pages, I know that's appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the city employees, I know that they've all been hustling. You know, even over the weekend, I think utilities and workers, they were already blowing out all the ditches and making sure that our infrastructure's cleared out, we're pumping water out in anticipation of the flooding, and I think the prep work leading up to the storm is gonna be one of the things that really helps our citizens mitigate some of the damage, so I wanted to thank the employees for their diligent efforts.
I will express that to them tomorrow morning, thank you.
Councilman Colombo.
I want to echo those sentiments, thank you to all the city workers, yourself as well, John, thank you for all your hard work. One question I did have, just for, and I know the answer already, I believe, but I wanted to hear it from you and from everybody else, well, if for some reason, the storm is bad enough that there is evacuation for this building issued, is there a provision to make transfer nine-one-one calls on, so there's a guarantee that there's no drop on nine-one-one response?
Obviously, I prefer to chief for some of that, my experience in the past, is that's pretty instantaneous when it's necessary.
Chief, anything else?
The county. So, automatically transferred, so no one ever has to worry about not having a response from nine-one-one in terms of the storm. Now, granted, you may be delayed in getting out there, or something of that nature, but at least there will be someone to answer the phone.
But I'm assuming our city dispatch potentially will not be on the.
Well, they're gonna be here as well.
I mean, say you're moved out of the building, and people call the non-essential line dispatch, are they going to nine-one-one, or can you handle those calls that are?
We still handle them, but if our system goes down, obviously, it's gonna go right to the county system, as far as the dispatching and stuff, they monitor our channel, and we can monitor theirs as well.
So, my only question, once somebody calls dispatch number directly.
The non-emergency.
The non-emergency.
Yes.
You will still get those, yeah, okay. That's just a clar.
Thank you all on these same lines, I know some law enforcement agencies, when it gets to a certain time, as a storm approaches, they bring all first responders in, they put the notice out saying, that such and such, first responders will not go out, and are we gonna share something like that on our?
Yeah. Yeah, cause I know that our sheriff had said that, under certain circumstances, they're just not gonna respond, particularly in areas that have been evacuated, if they've ordered evacuation, and you didn't evacuate, you're at your own peril, they said they're just not gonna put officer safety, or officers at risk to go out there, so I know that that was addressed, I think, at the county meeting, if I recall, and.
So, that leads me to our trailer park, that happened to flood, are we gonna be proactive?
Yes, we, in fact, both chiefs and I discussed that this morning in our department head meeting, and not only in the trailer park, but in some other fairly low-lying areas, we're gonna be making contact door-to-door, loudspeakers knocking outdoors, and.
And then we're gonna form them, look, you know, this is it, you either now, or you're on your own.
Yes, sir.
And the other, and again, I don't know what we can do, but it seems like there's been times where we've had some terrible storms in our sewer systems, just as there will, I mean, is there anything we can do, prepare?
Very little. The system is tied in and dependent on both Newport Ritchie and Pasco County, and the harsh reality is, if the water gets high enough, it's gonna go, it's gonna overwhelm the system, so obviously, we'll have the back truck out and be doing what we can, but there's a point at which you just have to wait for the water to go down.
That's all.
I think that wraps it up from commentary from city management council. The first thing that I wanted to vote on is, before everyone, is Resolution twenty-two, it's not been numbered yet, but it's a resolution by council, declaring an emergency pursuant to city code two twelve forty-eight, and it's a result of what was Tropical Depression Nine, which is now Hurricane Ian. That's the title of it, I was gonna pass it to our city attorney for explanation, and then we'll go from there.
The, I'll read it by title only, but this is not, our code reflects the state law and the matter, and just so you understand that Mr. Duke declares the emergency, you're just ratifying that, you could open rule it, but it's good for seven days, okay, and what he has to do is, and I'm kinda alerting you to this, as well as reminding Mr. Duke, that it renews, so he has to notice every, all of you, and post it at City Hall, that I'm gonna renew it for three more days. Now, hopefully, I think it's Monday at this time, it'll be okay, but sometimes I tell them to do it for an extra three days, because we may be using emergency services that we wanna build FEMA, we wanna still be under the emergency, okay, does that make sense? So, give a little attitude of fee postponement, even if things are looking better, okay. Having said that, this is Resolution number twenty-two, we're gonna put a number on it when we're done, it's just no problem. I'll read it by title only, Resolution by the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie declaring an emergency pursuant to city code section twelve forty-eight, it was a result of. And I say Tropical Depression Nine, because one of the reasons Mr. Duke can declare an emergency initially is because the state or local county government does, and under twelve, under, the governor did this one, it was still a Tropical Depression in the first order that came out, Pasco was in the first order, now Hurricane Ian, so looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
On the paper. Thank you, motion passed, the next council business item is going to be address our city council meeting, which was originally scheduled by charter for Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, which was tomorrow night at seven. There was an executive session as well, I think there may have been a CRA meeting, so I was looking to ratify our city management's use of his executive powers in an emergency to cancel that, and I think under the code, we're supposed to ratify that within forty-eight hours, so I was looking for a motion to, to approve the cancellation of those meetings.
A motion to approve the cancellation of the meeting.
On the paper. And the last item was just discussion on the information that we just received, I wanted to open it up to, I mean, I know that Mr. Duke's given us a bunch of information, but this is our chance to have any comment. but, um, this was our chance to have any commentary and suggestions that we wanna pass along to city management.
Yeah, one question I had earlier, and so, now, I noticed this morning, on, underway to work, a lot of debris has been huddling up, but it happens when the residents feel it's time to cut, but, uh, my understanding that the city has started going around and, uh, been collecting, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
That, that's all I have.
I have nothing further.
Nothing further, other than, well, I guess I wanted to ask, cause I know that, that city management's going to update, um, the general public via media outlets, um, including social media outlets, um, or social media outlets, so, um, I wanted to ask if, um, management would send us, if everyone's minimum, some emails has given us updates, says we made the storm progresses on, on what's going on.
Absolutely. Be glad to.
Okay. I appreciate that. Um, and I just wanted, uh, as much information as I can get, um, this, I believe, you know, at some point, there's gonna be some media attention, depending on how this goes, and, you know, I wanted to be on with the, the best information that I can, if I'm asking any questions.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, and then it's gonna, that's it.
No, nothing else, Sam.
No, thank you for all your hard work, and everybody here, I agree with that, thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good team.
Good luck to all of us.
Yeah, I think that concludes, uh, the council business for the emergency meeting. Looking for motion?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I leave my book here, because I think the next one.